Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone sign in, take the roll.
You might have to put them back on. They might have shut off.
Mine must be on.
You're still it?
Okay.
We are.
Mine on, yeah.
I'm number two.
Yeah, and it shows up there.
Somebody right.
The battery's out.
No, it just needs to be powered off, sorry.
Get this.
It's on, what the hell?
Actually, that works out better.
Maybe that's why your voice doesn't work.
Have I been silenced?
You've been muted.
All right.
Well, I'm here.
Turn it on.
All right, everybody is present?
Tom told us to turn it on.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the agenda.
Actually, let's.
As revised.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote, please.
Okay, one is yes, right?
Motion passes unanimously, and if we could stand for the invocation and pledge, please.
Shall we pray? In turn, God will become first of all to give you thanks. We thank you, the Lord, for life, health, and strength as now that you go into this meeting, be with us, and give us knowledge and wisdom to make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Place the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the agenda has already been approved. We can now move on to public addresses to the board. We have one person signed up, Ms. Ashlyn Cox.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and read your statement, if that's all right. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks. Pursuant to the board's rules of procedure, I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Thank you.
I'm Ashlyn Cox, and I live in Greenville. Hello, my name is Ashlyn Cox. I am 15 years old, and I'm the president of the Main Challengers 4-H Club, and I'm the 4-H Northeast District Member Engagement Officer, representing 23 counties. I have come here today because I would like to be the Pitt County Youth Voice Representative and tell you about what 4-H means to me, as well as what I would like to do for this county. I started out in 4-H six years ago at a goat and lamb camp. This may sound like another run-of-the-mill 4-H story, but to me, it's extremely important. That camp only lasted one day that year, but that one day changed my life forever. My animal that day was a goat, whom I named Pudding. Pudding was a gateway into my love of animals and my changing career path. Ever since that day, in the summer between second and third grade, I've become very invested in animals and 4-H. We joined our local club, our local 4-H club, the Main Challengers, and I met some of my close friends there. Shortly after joining 4-H, I started to show livestock, courtesy of Andy and Sarah Burlingham and the Tar River Ranch. The first lamb I showed was a lamb that I named Checkers. I fell in love with lambs as well, and I have shown many lambs and goats since then. I once showed a cow named Katrina, and she was named rightfully so because she was interesting to work with, to say the least. I worked with chickens at the Pitt County Fair, courtesy of Ms. Jessica Henderson, and I have recently taken one of my own four chickens, Matilda, to the Coastal Plains Chicken Show, where she received reserve champion and breeds. Animals have always been a huge part of my life, inside as well as outside of the home. I have four chickens, a cat, and a dog, and I'm currently showing a lamb and a goat. After that first day of goat and lamb camp, I knew that I wanted to do something with animals. In the third grade, we did a project on what we wanted to be when we grew up, and I chose zoologist, and that has stuck with me ever since. My family and I even determined what high school I would attend based off whether or not there was an animal science program for me. I am now at DH Conley, and I am taking animal science classes with Ms. Armour. I've also joined the 4-H chapter at Conley, and it has been very wonderful. Two years ago, I also joined the Pitt County Livestock Judging Team, and it has been really fun. As you can see, 4-H and animals have always been a huge part of my life, so I would really like to go to the Youth Voice Conference so that I can see what is happening in the community and to share my idea with commissioners from my county and from other counties as well. I've been starting to think about ideas for more 4-H involvement, such as different camps around the county. Camps should be more accessible to people because the majority of campers are already 4-Hers or their friends. I believe that 4-H needs more funding for their camps as well. Our 4-H coordinator, Ms. Laurindale, does an outstanding job with camps we currently have. However, with more funding and support, we can then have camps that talk about more parts of 4-H, have more supplies, and be able to accept more people. We already have a variety of camps, but I feel like we should have at least one camp focusing solely on the careers of agriculture and 4-H. I have more ideas that are coming, and I would love to have the opportunity to share them with more people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Cox, I understand this was for the class?
Um, no, it's for the Youth Voice Conference.
Okay.
Good job.
Wonderful presentation. Would you like to, Ashlyn, do you want to come up front? We can take a picture?
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Good job, Ashlyn. She used to have a pit goat, too.
We'll switch numbers one and two and move right into the Eagle Scout recognitions while we are down front. This is. Ah, I think I've got it. Mr. Chairman, always a very exciting time, and so pleased that we have returned to doing recognitions of Eagle Scouts in person the first time since the pandemic. So there are six individuals who have received their Eagle Scout, one of whom is with us tonight, and we'll call him up first. So if Mr. Cross Lauderdale and his family would come forward. Troop 25. Line up right here, and we have a certificate of appreciation awarded to Cross Lauderdale for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he built a sensory garden and rain barrels for the Farmville Community Garden, and we present this to you by the Board of County Commissioners dated this 8th day of August 2022, signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick, and I will pass this to him to present to you. Is there anything you'd like to say? You don't have to say anything at all. We are very, very proud of you for this wonderful accomplishment. Thank you so much. While we're here, I'll go ahead and read the others who could not be with us this evening, but as we go back, if the board will approve all of the certificates, we will mail them. The next one is Erin Hodges, also from Troop 25, who restored, repainted, and refurbished all of the outdoor playground equipment at Hollywood Church. Griffith Brimhall from Troop 9 cleaned, reorganized, and built the storage area for the Smiles and Frowns Playhouse of Pitt County. Tyler Cash of Troop 25 constructed a large number of heavy-duty benches and installed them at the Farmville Community Disc Golf Course. Cole Reason of Troop 25 refurbished and cleaned and partially rebuilt the baseball dugouts for Farmville Central High School. And Levi Johnson from Troop 9046 completed an extensive building facelift for his church at Eastern Pines. So for all of those Eagle Scouts, it is an incredible honor. We are proud of each one of you and your parents for raising such fine young men in our community. We look forward to seeing what the future holds for each of these six individuals. And if the board will approve those certificates.
It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote, please. Motion passes. If we can now move on to the spotlight, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good to be with you tonight. There'd been a request by Commissioner Ward for information concerning the Pitt County Cooperative Extension Agency, and we're here tonight to help present that. I've got a couple of introductions to make, but first, I want to make all those aware that may not be aware that Lee Guth, who was our former Cooperative Extension Director, tendered her resignation earlier this summer. So tonight, I'd like to introduce you, number one, to Andy Burlingham. He's our interim Cooperative Extension Director. And also, we have the pleasure of having Art Bradley, who is the Regional Director for Cooperative Extension, and he covers several counties in eastern North Carolina. He's also here tonight. So be aware, Art will be assisting with locating and bringing a new director in, and the county will be involved with that process. So tonight, we'd like to give you a video that Lee herself stars in before she left that gives you a good idea of what this group does. It's almost like it was staged tonight, talking about 4-H, community gardens, cooperative extensions involved in all those types of activities. So if our Public Information Officer that has done a great job in pulling this together would start the video, we'll go through that. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to stick around to answer those.
North Carolina Cooperative Extension is improving lives and growing our estate through extension agents working in Pitt County. As the partnering force between university research and the lives that research benefits, North Carolina Cooperative Extension utilizes a vast network of federal, state, and county support to feed our future, improve our health, and enrich our youth. We provide local workshops, publications, online resources, field days, and one-on-one consultations. North Carolina Cooperative Extension volunteers donated over 2,900 hours of service as 4-H leaders, extension and community association members, and NC State Extension Master Gardeners, totaling $360,000 of economic impact for Pitt County. On average, North Carolina Cooperative Extension generates a 27-to-1 return on annual government investment. That's $27 worth of economic impact in Pitt County for every dollar spent. North Carolina Cooperative Extension recently made recommendations for irrigation, pesticide application, and fertilization of a new pecan orchard run by NC Farm School graduates. Extension identified drainage issues that saved $4,000 worth of young trees with a future production value of approximately $10,000 a year. Additionally, Pitt County Extension hosted peanut pod blasting clinics throughout the county. By following clinic recommendations, farmers generated over $290,000 in additional revenue. Extension also provides the pesticide education required to maintain licensing for Pitt County farmers and landscape professionals, as well as waste management education and credits for hog farm operators. And it doesn't stop there. North Carolina Cooperative Extension is actively investing in the future of Pitt County. Pitt's staff reached over 3,700 youth in 2021, providing leadership, STEM, and health education through 4-H. Along with supporting North Carolina's number-one industry of agriculture, North Carolina Cooperative Extension teaches how to prepare healthy meals, preserve extra produce, and how to follow food safety best practices. For more information about the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Center in Pitt County, please visit pitces.ncsu.edu.
Thank you for the presentation. That was wonderful. Does anybody have any?
Question?
Yeah, if someone were interested in getting a little more funding for, say, 4-H to do more camps in the county, would they come to y'all for such a thing?
So our funding comes from a variety of sources. So we put on the camp, so we're not, so the funding comes through a combination of fees that people pay to participate in camps, and then sponsorships that we can find from the communities where our funding comes from for putting on 4-H camp activities.
So to expand that base of camps, how does that happen?
So that would have to happen in a couple of different ways. We need to find more funding sources. So we would do that through looking for some fundraising sources or Pitt County Government. So wish to be inclined to provide additional funding that way. It could also happen.
Thank you for that.
North Carolina A&amp;T and North Carolina State, of course, I'm a graduate of A&amp;T State University, tell us the role that they play in this corporation.
So we do have a cooperative arrangement. Some counties have A&amp;T staff that work directly in the county. At this time, Pitt County does not, but for example, Edchcombe County does. Several other counties in the area that have 4-H agents. So the mission of A&amp;T's effort is looking at limited resource audiences, and whether that's farmers or youth, and they have staff that reach out and do that. They've also had some efforts here in Pitt County, but it's been transitory. When they have opportunities, they've had programs at the Pitt County Extension Center, but we don't have staff directly located here in Pitt County. But we can certainly call on those resources at A&amp;T State University. So we're land-grant university, NC State, A&amp;T's a land-grant state university, and so we equally reach out to those universities and seek resources and assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here today to present a road name change for US 264 West and 587 and US 264 alternate. For the official designation of the future Interstate 587, which has happened now along the existing 264 segment between 95 and NC 11 bypass in Pitt County, the US 264 alternate segment between the county boundary and its intersection with US 13 has been eliminated by NC DOT and has been redesignated as US 264. This is their map that's talking about all the different segments along Pitt County, Green County, and Wilson County of how they're eliminating that 264 alternate. So the process, the renaming process will impact Pitt County's addressing, and the affected roads must be renamed during the public hearing as stipulated in our Section 7 of the county's addressing ordinance. So we're recommending the following road name changes. Rename 264 West as 587 from the Pitt County line to 264 NC 11 Southwest Bypass. Continue the names of East Marlboro Road and West Marlboro Road from Farmville city limits to the affected portions. And there's two sections to that. There's the east side and the west side. The east side would be from US 13 to Farmville Town Limits and rename it the East Marlboro Road. And then the west side is the US 264 alternate to Farmville Town Limits to the Pitt County boundary. And this is kind of a map to show those two areas. You can see where 13 is coming out of Greenville, and when it goes off into Green County, then that's the segment we're talking about that would be affected until you get to the Farmville Town Limits. And as you go through, it's already named East and West Marlboro Road, and then on the outside, going into Green County, that would be the other section. We have a favorable recommendation from the Farmville Town Manager and the Postmasters in 911 with our recommendation. They liked the idea of continuing the road names the way we added. So after the holding public hearing, we were asking to approve the proposed name changes.
This time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up to speak.
At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain any motions or further discussion.
I'd like to move that we approve the renaming of US 264 as I 587 and continue the names on East Marlboro Road. I want to make sure I get it all, and then the US 264 alternate.
It's been moved improperly second. I'm court. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can now move on to Social Services.
Dr. Frazier.
And Dr. Frazier.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to be able to catch you guys, lady. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'll briefly walk you through the CDBG grant that I have requested to be closed based on several issues that came up during our implementation of this grant. So what was the CDBG grant? This grant was a grant that we sought during the peak of the pandemic that we were getting higher volumes of eviction notices. So DSS thought we were going to be able to expand this money in as early as six to one year. However, when we got this grant, several outlines of the grant were, A, people must be in eviction process, B, they must have a lease, C, they must be either behind or actually in the actual eviction process. And the monitorium was expanded, extended the first time and the second time during the process whilst we were waiting for approval from the Department of Commerce to expand this money. The CDBG grant is a very complex grant. When we got it, there were several items that were needed, even though they were not related to the grant itself. The Section 504 survey, environmental survey, we have to fill that up. Our site plan, we got to fill that up. Luckily for us, we have an expert with Pitt County. Thank you, Dave. He was able to help us out with a lot of these things to meet the deadline. Finally, we completed the floor plan by January 15, 2021. At that point, we had already spent some money to be able to staff by equipment so that when this grant was released, we are going to be able to just flood it out to people who qualified. But we did not receive the approval from DOC until the 23rd of February. Even at that, that was just authorization. The DOC will give, yes, I authorize you. This is your money, but you will not spend it until we do what is called the startup. And that startup means, yes, you can draw down from the actual funding. But luckily, they gave us okay to spend X amount of dollars, which was $89,000 and change, as administrative cost, 10% of the $900,000. So we did the first public hearing, the second public hearing, and by June, July 1, which ended the second monitorium, we had already spent $47,030, that 47.30, that. And the eviction prevention received $14,287.27, and the utility prevention was $30,366.16. So what were the problems? About 30 to 60% of people who could have benefited from this program did not have a lease. They were subleasing. And the grant said, you must have a lease. You must be in an eviction so that we term it eviction prevention program. People couldn't get lease, and also, they were supposed to link it to a COVID event. When we saw that they were having trouble with the COVID event, we developed a platform wherein they would just tell us their story, work with legal aid, and they would sign an attestation that, yes, their event was COVID-related. Then we had a problem with the landlords. Landlords couldn't give you a lease if you're not living there because most people had already walked out of their apartments, even though they still owed them out. So there was no lease. Landlords refused to also extend some of the leases of people who they had already decided they don't want in their properties anymore. So there was no lease at all. So these factors cumulatively stopped people from qualifying for this grant. And mind you, we only had $87,000, $89,000 to expand this $900,000. That means for every $100,000, we could only use $8,000 to administer this fund, which was not feasible because we thought initially this was going to be quick in and out. It did not happen. Finally, I looked at the program and compressed all of those numbers in December, and I went to the county manager and told her, this is not a feasible program. We may end up spending close to about $500,000 of county money to expand this money of $800,000. It doesn't make sense. Already, we have finished spending what was supposed to be the 10% administrative fee of only about $7,000 remaining, and we have not even expended $200,000. So I made a decision, and I worked with the county manager. I've explained to her the ramification and impact to the county. It is not at this point a worldwide program, and therefore, I am requesting that we return and close out this grant of whatever amount that is left. That is my submission. I will take any questions from the Commissioners.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up to speak.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any comments and/or motions?
Yes.
Motion to approve if there's no discussion.
I second it.
It's been moved improperly second. Everyone could vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We now move on to items for report. Ms. Reeves and Mr. Crisco.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Will Crisco, Chief Development Officer from Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain, joined by Kimberly Reeves, who is our Chief Operating Officer, as well as our interim president and CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain. I wanted to take an opportunity to join Wanted to take an opportunity to join you all tonight and thank you for your support here in Pitt County. You're incredible ambassadors for our kids and our communities. And also be able to provide just an update for you all on where we are as an organization. We just recently completed our 2021-2022 program year. And earlier this spring, we had an opportunity to join the Pitt County ABC Board to be able to make a presentation on our SMART Moves curriculum as it relates to alcohol and drug prevention. And at that time, there were some feedback, or there was some feedback for us to be able to address this group as a Board of Commissioners for Pitt County, to be able to discuss our impact, the difference that we make on critically underserved and underprivileged youth here in our community. We are incredibly appreciative of the support that we receive. We are a 17 club organization in seven counties across eastern North Carolina. Our flagship is here in Pitt County with the number of youth that we serve, as well as our administrative offices are also located here on Fire Tower on our Winterville Jack Minji's location. But as it relates to programming and the day-to-day operations that happen in our club, Kimberly Reeves is most intimately involved with our programming, the academic successes. So I'd love for her to be able to take the mic from me and be able to speak to just the impact that's having, that we're having in the kids' lives and our families and our communities here in Pitt County.
Thank you, Will, and thank you all for having us. First of all, I just want to shout out to Allison Cox. Like, how fabulous is she? And not only is she here representing, for H, this past March, she donated Scholastic Books to one of our locations, a Marloso Gorm location in West Greenville. So, thank you.
That was a book drive that actually started in 2020, and I believe it was 5,000 books that you totaled.
Wow. So we definitely need to keep our eye on her because her reach is going to be long. And so like Will said, we are in 17 locations. Five of those locations are right here in Pitt County, where we have three core areas of programming: academic success, healthy lifestyles, and character and leadership. And everything that we do within our after-school space and our summer space links back to one of those three areas, three core areas. And so we keep our kids busy. Right now, post-COVID, still kind of in COVID, you know, just trying to figure out what that looks like for us. We are increasing our, what we're calling, and probably what you guys have heard the terminology before, is high dosage tutoring. And so we're partnering with Pitt County Schools and quite a few of our other counties to make sure that we are offering what needs to be offered to young people. And so not only are we experiencing losses in education and academics with the youth that we're serving, and just youth across eastern North Carolina, Pitt County period, we're also seeing a lot of changes in behavior. And so one of the things that we also do is we address not only academic wellness, but we address mental wellness with our social emotional development programming. And so we have some handouts for you guys. I don't want to take up too much of your time going through those things. I want you to be able to just sit with it for a little bit and explore. We served almost 1,000 students in Pitt County this past school year, and it's our plan to get that number up by about 500 this school year as we return to some of those pre-COVID numbers and services that we're providing. Continued partnerships with Pitt County Schools in Farmville, Aiden, West Greenville, Winterville, and Greenville. We have, again, five locations there, and we have a fantastic relationship with the school system, so much so that we have a dedicated staff that actually goes into the schools and works with teachers, with the students, that the teachers recommend that need more intensive intervention. And so we provided about 2,000 hours of individual and small group tutoring last year. And again, it's our plan to expand on that this year as we have sought, with several funding sources, additional resources in order to do that. And does anybody have any questions? I want to do a quick shout out to my fellow Aggie over here, and if there's any Wolfpacks in the group, you know, hello to you as well.
Does anybody have any additional comments or questions? If not, just like to thank you for your presentation and thank you all that you do for Pitt County and eastern North Carolina. So thank you for coming and giving the presentation. We will be having an application process that will be starting hopefully pretty soon with some of that additional funding from our, so just keep that in mind.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for having us. Have a good evening.
I'd like to see you and welcome in North Pitt.
Absolutely.
Mr. Green.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. Tonight, I bring you my final settlement of taxes upon my vacancy as the tax collector for the term of July 1, 2022 through July 23, 2022. North Carolina General Statute 105 373D requires full settlement to be made when there is a vacancy during a tax collector's term. My final day as tax collector was July 23, 2022. It is my recommendation that the board accept and approve the settlement of taxes as presented.
Thank you.
I make a motion for acceptance.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. If everyone could vote. Motion passes unanimously. And I believe we have some representatives from PGV. Mr. Banks, are you here on behalf of Mr. Hopper, or is he? Not trying to put you on the spot. We can wait for Mr. Hopper. Okay. You're welcome. We can move on to the managers' report.
Okay, thank you. I have a few items for you this evening. Item A are your next meeting dates, August 22 at 6:00 p.m. and September 12 at 6:00 p.m. here in this same auditorium. A reminder that later this week, we have the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, August 11 to the 13th in Concord. Item C is just an update for those who may have been expecting to hear a presentation on reentry program funds at this meeting. You may recall in February, this board talked about funding some portion of the reentry program from American Rescue Plan funds, and we were intending to bring that back in August. After further review and conversation with the county attorney and members at Pitt Community College, it appears that the more appropriate source of funding for this program is the opioid settlement funds. Reentry program is a specifically enumerated Option A item within those funds. American Rescue Plan funds are available for two years, essentially. Opioid settlement funds are available for 18 years. And so in September, as I told you previously, we had a group of stakeholders who were talking about how to expend opioid funds, and we'll be making that presentation in your regular meeting in September. So this is just a note that that reentry program funding will be built into that presentation, and you'll hear further in September. Item number D, letter D, I have three awards that I'm thrilled to present. It's nice to know that we're doing great things here in Pitt County each and every day. It's even nicer when we are recognized at the state and national level for those efforts. So if Mike Taylor would stand up while I talk about this one, the first is your CDG, Your Centers for Digital Government 2022 Digital County Surveys Award. And Mike accepted this award on behalf of Pitt County when we were in the NACO Conference last week in Adams County, Colorado. And this award, Pitt County received the fourth place for counties of our population size for our strong alignment of IT services with county leadership priorities. It recognized our commitment to cybersecurity. It recognized our access to the public and our use of innovation in digital technology. And so for that, I couldn't be more pleased that we were able to accept this award on behalf of Pitt County and congratulate, this was truly a team effort, but congratulate Mike Taylor for her efforts in making this happen. The second award, if Chad would stand up, Chad Singleton, will be received this Friday at the NCAA Statewide Conference. And our Mutt Strutters Dog Walking Program was recognized for an NCAA Civic Excellence in Innovation Award because the data showed that not only was this program good for the weight and health of the individuals walking the dogs, but it also enhanced the quality of life for each animal, making them more adoptable. This has been a team effort with community volunteers, Melanie Sartor at East Carolina University, and our animal services staff. And I am thrilled that we will accept this award on Friday at the NCAA Conference. So thanks to Chad.
While we're talking about that, I think if anyone, any of the commissioners especially, have not been out to look at the new environment that our dogs are in and the job that they've done out there. I know he would welcome the visit. I was amazed. I mean, I really was not expecting that we had done that much, and it just looks wonderful. And he's got kids coming in, reading to the dogs, and seeing those dogs sit in those cages just like a child in a classroom mesmerized is amazing. But it's true, isn't it? They just sit there and looking until they get through reading, and then they'll get up and go back and get a drink of water and lay down. So it's quite a place to visit, and it's just so clean and looks so nice. Appreciate the job.
Good stuff. And the last award that I want to share, at the National Association of Counties Conference, Sheriff Paula Dance was not present, but received an achievement award for her Sharp and Wear Men's and Women's Heroin Addiction Programs within the Pitt County Detention Center. So we're pleased to see the continued recognition for those great programs as well. And then I have one item to add, Mr. Chairman, and that is, since the printing of the agenda, there was a workers' compensation settlement that, per law, we need to report out for employee Darren Hignight in the amount of $24,384.38 from a motor vehicle accident on July 17, 2018. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. At this time, entertain a motion for consent.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Everyone could vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Now moving on to items for decision. Mr. Singleton, you're up again.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I'm here with you tonight with the recommendation to approve the Animal Shelter Services Agreement with the City of Greenville to become the city's exclusive animal shelter. In that, the city agrees to compensate the county for approximately $4,000 per month with some additional revenues that might come from adoptions and other things as well. It is mutually agreed upon that both parties have a high interest in providing high-quality animal services to all of the citizens of Pitt County, and as such, this contract will provide a more streamlined service to our citizens and shared animal services as well. If approved tonight, there is still a component to go before city council, which is anticipated to be sometime later in the month, after which the contract, if approved, the contract's start date would be September 1, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question. Chad, does that mean that if the council goes along with this, that if somebody calls, they will know, regardless of whether it's in Greenville or the county, they're not going to be given a runaround like they feel like they're being given now?
Yes, sir. So as it is right now, it's kind of a patchwork between the animal shelter, a private vendor that the city uses, and a kennel that they have on-site, one of their city properties.
So it's going to be a one number?
That's correct. When an individual calls looking for an animal such as lost and found, or even if it's a stray, or for adoption, there would be a one-stop shop that they would call the animal services in Pitt County, and we would provide information with them.
Long overdue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it had been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote.
While you're voting on that, I do also thank Chad. This is really an incredible collaborative effort between the county and the city of Greenville that will benefit all of our citizens.
And the motion passed? Ms. Hardy.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. I'm back. This is the second reading for a request to amend the county's personnel ordinance, two sections of it. Section 109, which would include to add the Juneteenth holiday. In addition to the holidays we're observing now as we follow the state's holiday schedule. And the second section is Section 111, which would include eight hours of paid leave time per calendar year. This is not cumulative. It's a use it or lose it. That would allow our employees to go volunteer for a nonprofit or some other government agency out in the community, or use the time to attend school activities for their children so they can be present for that. So this is the second reading, and we're requesting that and hoping that you will approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Unless there's any further discussion, it's been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote, please. Motion passes. Madam Manager.
Your next item is an appointment and a reappointment to the Farmers Market Policy Advisory Committee, found on page 106 in your agenda. The Farmers Market Policy Advisory Committee is recommending that Wilbert James Futral be appointed to fill an unexpired term that expires April 8, 2025, and that Mrs. Jean Spong be reappointed for a second term, which will expire April 8, 2025.
Will approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Manager.
Your next one is an appointment to the Pitt County Planning Board. You may recall Brad Guth resigned from that board when he moved to the western part of the state earlier this year. The planning board does not provide a recommendation. There is one name in your packet, Thompson H. Forbes.
Motion to approve Thompson Forbes.
Second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded.
I spoke to him. I called him intentionally because I met him. There was only one, and he's anxious to...
Motion passes unanimously.
Your third appointment this evening is to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. That council is recommending that Mr. Troy Strickland be appointed to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, filling the at-risk juvenile seat.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Everyone could vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we are well ahead of the time schedule for our meeting this evening. All that you have remaining is the report from Pitt Greenville Airport, and Mr. Hopper was scheduled to be here around 7:00, and then you have a short closed session. If you would entertain handling your closed session, if we could come back out and hear the Greenville Airport report following.
Certainly entertain such a motion.
I would make a motion for that.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to go into closed session.
If I could recite the basis, Mr. Chairman, it's been suggested this body go into closed session under four sections, the General Statute 143, 31811, under Section A1 to prevent disclosure of information that is confidential, under General Statute 143, 31810, under A3 to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, under subsection A4 to assess matters related to economic development, and subsection A6 to consider a personnel matter.
And Mr. Banks, we will let you know when we are ready for you, when Mr. Hopper gets here. So thank you. We will not be terribly long. Your first item up is economic development, so those involved in economic...
Welcome back. We're now back into open session at this time. Entertain any motions.
First motion I'd like to make, Chair Fitzpatrick, is a motion to appoint Mr. Russell Hill as a new tax administrator for a two-year term at a salary grade 82, Step 1, effective August 21 of this year.
Second motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote.
Sorry, let me skip to another motion. Sorry.
Congratulations.
My second motion is to increase the Attorney One position 78076 from 50% to 100% also with an effective date of August 21.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes unanimously.
And lastly, I would like to make a motion to improve the closed session minutes from June 6, 2022.
Will it?
Second. It's been moved and properly second. That motion also passes. Mr. Hopper?
How you doing?
Good evening.
Evening. How y'all doing?
Good. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be up here. It's been probably pre-COVID last time I was up in this room, so very good to be back. And then I was new. So, but I just wanted to give a brief, and I just also want to recognize Commissioner Nunley, he's serving on our board at this time, and very much appreciate his service and very much enjoy working with him. But we'll go ahead and get started. Just, we're doing a presentation here on the airport, providing some updates, kind of show you how we're making our way out of COVID right now. Let's see, I'll just do it the old-fashioned way. If there is an old-fashioned, are we advancing, is it just on this right here?
Can you use the arrows on the keyboard?
Okay. So as doing, it's not advancing. Let's see there. There we go. All right. So there we go. I'm just gonna, the agenda that we're gonna have is we're, I'll go over the economic impact that Pitt Greenville Airport has on the local region. I'm also gonna go over a little bit into the economic impact just that aviation has on the state of North Carolina, go over some operational figures, update everybody on what we're doing as far as air service. We do have some hangars. I'm sure some of you have been up Memorial Drive, and I'll kind of give a brief on that. And then just where our budget stands, and then if there are any questions. Our, first of all, our economic impact. First of all, to the state of North Carolina, aviation is a $61 billion economic impact to the state of North Carolina with 300, I did skip a zero on that, but 373,000 jobs, $15 billion in personal income, and $2.5 billion in tax revenue. It is one of the largest employers in the state, of course, American Airlines, the military here in eastern North Carolina. So this is very much, I mean, this is the, you know, first flight, so it is, aviation's very important to this area. To the region, Pitt Greenville Airport has $321 million economic impact to the region with 1770 jobs, 81 million in personal income, and about 9.5 million in tax revenue. So as you can see, the, you know, just the effect of Pitt Greenville Airport on this region is very important. Of course, as anybody in economic development will tell you, it's important to have an airport. That is one of the checkmarks that when companies come looking to locate somewhere, the, the health of the airport is always very important. In operations, I mean, we've, this just kind of shows you that we're catching up with COVID. We had about just shy of 20,000 operations. Every time an aircraft takes off or lands, that is considered an operation. We had just under 20,000. And then we went to 15,000 during the COVID year. We actually, flight, the flight school actually was doing okay during that period, so we had some activity. But then we get back into the 2021, and we're catching right back up, almost to where we were pre-COVID. As far as in plane passengers go, just, this, this right here reflects the, the activity that we have. If you look at this, we're sitting, we're at about 54,000 employments. That's passengers that get onboard a plane in 2019. So we're having, we're kind of steadily climbing. We got down to about 19,000 employments during the COVID year. If people recall, we did have about a three-month period where we had no air service at all. And if you look now, we're sitting about 32,000, 33,000 employments. When you consider that we have less than half the flights, and we're more than half the, the number of passengers we had pre-COVID, it shows you just how, the response that the, that the community is having on air service here. We have met, you know, with American Airlines a couple of times, and they, they'll tell you, you know, the problem right now is there aren't any pilots. And there's, you know, I can go into it, you know, what caused the whole situation. However, the airlines are getting very creative, trying to build up pilots, and I'm very confident that when we get back to where, you know, to where they can start hiring pilots, that they will start increasing flights, starting in September. Because of, you know, if you think about it, it takes two pilots to fly a 50-passenger airplane, and it takes two pilots to fly 300-passenger airplanes. So it just kind of tells you where the airlines are going to put those, those pilots. They are going to be putting in larger aircraft for the first time. We're going to have first-class service out of Pitt Greenville, and that's going to begin this September, where we'll have 66-passenger aircraft, which will increase the number of passengers that get on a plane by 32 a day. Just kind of going over the service, I kind of touched on a little bit when I talked about the passengers. Our present service is, is two flights a day on American. And as I said before, we're going to be starting with, with two-class service starting in September. We're very excited about that. Our, you know, predominantly, we are a business, you know, business flyer type of operation, and the business flyers do like to sit at the front of the plane. So we're, we're very happy to be able to offer that. If people recall, just prior to the COVID, to the pandemic hitting, we were, we were given a grant from the Department of Transportation to attract service, a network service through Washington DC. That has kind of been put on hold because the airlines are, they're not growing on the regional side. And so we continue to meet with these airlines, because when, when things start happening again, I'm very confident that, that we'll be able to, you know, to work on getting that service. And it's, North Carolina is a growing state. I think everybody in here very much sees that. And, you know, it's just a matter of bringing, you know, getting, getting the airline industry back to where it was, or at least starting approaching it, to where we can get some more opportunities. We also look at other opportunities. For instance, there are what they call the, the ultra-low-cost carriers, which are like your Allegiance and your Frontiers. And we do talk with them about the possibility, maybe direct service to Florida, be something where it'd be like a less than daily service. However, it would be a great offering, especially to people that are, you know, the younger people that are moving to, you know, into this area to have that opportunity to maybe go down, you know, instead of having to spend two days driving, hop on a plane and fly direct to Orlando. So these are some of the things that we are looking to. And that service right now has started in Wilmington, is going very well. They have Avelo there. So hopefully, we can maybe kind of ride on their coattails and see what type of opportunities we may have here. Just very briefly on the budget, we just had our budget approved by the Board of Directors, where we have about $4.6 million. We are, you know, we, we, right now, the CARES Act money is, is very helpful in, in helping us keep our budget balanced, because there is, you know, with, with the, the air service being reduced as it is, it does, it does, you know, put a strain on the budget somewhat. And one of those is that the parking, because if you're, you know, if you have five flights a day, and you have those people parking, and now you only have two flights a day, it just means that there aren't as many vehicles out there parking. And parking is such a very important part of revenue. However, we are looking at ways, other opportunities for revenue. This just kind of goes into our capital projects. We have about $62 million over the next five years that we're hoping to be able to, to do capital improvements. Right now, we are, we're getting ready to redo our taxiway. It's just, an airport is just something where you're just constantly going around, and as things get old, you replace it. And it's, you know, kind of like the roads. You just, you have to keep replacing these things. They're not inexpensive, very expensive ventures, and so we just want to keep up with that. These are 90% funded by FAA, these projects, and they do have a 10% local share. We're, right now, we're, we have our passenger facility charges, which we can apply towards that. That's $4.50 on every ticket, which is very typical across the country, and we use those to help us with the local costs. And lastly, when we get into, start talking about the capital, is we're building the hangars. And I'm sure that many of you have gone up Memorial Drive. In fact, I'm just gonna kind of go ahead here. That just shows you what the aircraft, but in the questions right there, you'll notice that's what it's going to look like on Memorial Drive, where we're going to have three hangars that are going to be right on Memorial Drive. We're going to have our PGV brand on one of the hangars, and we're going to make sure that that's lighted. And then on the other side of those hangars, going to be two more hangars. And after, and right now, we're also looking at adding two additional hangars. These are the, the largest chance we have for revenue at the airport. We figure that, that with each hangar, just a very approximate number, it could be maybe around $100,000 a year revenue from each hangar. So if, you know, if we were able to get these seven hangars, that could be a very significant amount of revenue that, that could go to our, you know, onto our revenue side. These hangars are looking to be fully, you know, ready by February, and then the additional two would probably be maybe like another year after that. So we're very excited about this. You know, these aircraft, that, you know, they're, if, right now, the, the highest-priced aircraft, highest-value aircraft we have at the airport is $20 million, and that's $20 million property, you know, taxed property. And so these are, you know, these are aircraft that, that could bring a lot of, of good revenue to the local area, and also adds to that economic impact that I discussed earlier. And so with that, I don't know if, John Banks is our chairman of the board. He's here with me. I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, John?
Yep. I'm gonna expand a little bit on what Bill's talking about on the expenses at the airport. I'd like to hand out two pieces of paper. One is in the past five years, I'll give this to Kimberly. One's the, the last five years, and the one, you saw Bill projecting for the next five years. And I'll let Kimberly get those around. And I mentioned this before at the groundbreaking, several of y'all were there, that the airport is the gateway to eastern North Carolina. We're not just a Greenville Airport. People from all over eastern North Carolina come here to fly out. So it has a lot more economic impact outside of Pitt County, just as it does in Pitt County and City of Greenville. So it's very important for the region that we are a good, safe, logistically-supported airline facility. And a lot of the stuff you see on these papers helps support keeping the airlines here. If you don't do them, you don't upgrade, then you can't keep passengers, you can't keep airlines. And the first one, look back what we've done, $39 million in the last five years, that's including the, the hangars on the first page. Right in the middle of the bottom is $39 million. Okay? That is a lot of money. I mean, we did grants for this, CARES money helped us build these hangars, the hangars are in, in here. And without that CARES grant, we would have been in really bad shape. It has helped keep the airport functional and leveled money. Now, if you look at the next one, Bill had his slide up there, but actually, the next slide showing the projected AIP or Airport Improvement Programs for the next four to five years, you'll see the runway 826 refurb, it says $6.5 million. That's a lot, it's going to be 10. If you look back on the other sheet, runway 0220 was $10 million. So it's going to be another $4 million on that, so $71 million the next five years. We will get grants to help with this building projects. It's a lot of money. So if you multiply that times three, that's $210 million into the local economy, because of jobs, infrastructure, et cetera. That's, that's booming. We don't use roads, schools, any other functions for the county and city. So it's a good deal for the community and for the region. We're proud of what we do. A lot of these things on this list are safety. We've got to have them to keep the airport open. You can't have a, run an airport unless you do the things we're looking at doing. Any questions on anything?
Look.
Christian Nunley?
Briefly, thank you, John, and thank you, Bill, for coming. I wanted to just, I'm sure it's pretty clear from the presentation, but that we all understand how valuable the airport is, but the leadership of the board of the airport and the executive of the airport, and positioning the airport, using funds that were recovery funds to help place the airport in a position of financial solvency moving forward, putting the airport in a stronger position coming out of a very difficult time. It wouldn't have happened but for a fantastic group of citizens that, that work and support, and staff that work and support this airport. So I hope everyone understands how valuable that work is, and, and that we're not taking these, your, your, your organization's not taking these funds and squandering it. You're making what we've got better. And I, and I, for one, as, as, as an elected official, am very thankful that we've got such a competent group, helping keep the airport in a really good position.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know it, I tell new board members, it takes you a year to become functional with all the acronyms and all the grant money, how it comes and goes, and what we have to do. But it's, we have a caring board. They care about what they do. They really do. You see that in your meetings. We have some real good debates. I'm probably the worst one about that. But I will not let a dollar be spent that we don't need to spend. And this CARES money, we, we had a program with the city and county, which they believed in us on helping us build some hangars. Thank you. It's worked. Program works. We have other programs out there we're trying to get established, and we got to, we got to create revenue. We have revenue from rentals, from parking, from selling fuel. That's it. We cannot use any of the FAA money for operations. It's, it's for infrastructure, and we're very fortunate we got this money, and we are good, we are good stewards of the money. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner. Any questions? I kept it short as a few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could now move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ward?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hoke?
Well, yes, I do. First of all, on August 2nd, I represented you at a meeting of the Family Justice Center. This is in preparation to start a Family Justice Center here in, in Pitt County. All of the players were at the table, so this is something that we're looking forward to along with, I would say along with the county manager there. I attended the NACO meeting. I want to say, first of all, that our artwork was displayed on the wall, not just our winners, but all of the artwork were displayed on, on the wall. So we're looking forward to participating again on this year, art competition. I was the delegate, so I, I voted. We elected a, we elected Denise Winfrey from Illinois as the president, and, and James Go, Go, I believe, as the second vice president. That was the, the, the vote that I had to cast. That was a three-way race. And the voting was different this time. Tom, you could not look up and see who was leading, because we voted by using Election Buddy, you know. So, so you couldn't look up and see who, who was leading, then, and, and state, you know, cast their vote according to who was leading. So it was a little bit, it was, it was better this time. So I just want to say that I believe, oh, I hope that we will participate in Operation Greenlight. This is something that they brought forward. This is something that they brought forward for states and counties to participate. This will shed light on our veteran needs, and this is for November. They want us to light up, like the courthouse or either this building, green in recognition of veterans and to make their needs, you know, make us aware of their, of veterans' needs. This is something that NACO is promoting. I hope we, as a county, will take part in that. So, that's all I have to report. If maybe the other two commissioners might want to add something, or even the county manager, other three commissioners and county manager might want to add something to that.
Mr. President?
No comment.
Commissioner White?
No comment.
Commissioner Nunley?
Just wanted to remind everyone that the Little League Softball World Series opening ceremony is tonight. Games start tomorrow, so go out to Elm Street Park, go watch some of the best in the world play.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No comment.
I'd like to just echo the comments that Commissioner Hoodie has made. Thank you.
Commissioner Coles?
I would expect that every commissioner here would like to see graduates from high school going bound for college to be superior in their learnings when it comes to math or STEM, you know, sciences and so on. And I don't know exactly how to approach this, Janice, but it has come to my knowledge that there is a severe equipment, facilities, and chemical shortage within the high schools to where we do not have a chance of producing students that are really capable of, I'm going to say, being the best of the best. And it may need for us as county commissioners to seriously think about what might we do to augment what we already do to help the schools meet that.
I can certainly follow up with the superintendent and investigate that further and bring back a report, either to this board or in your weekly packet for you all to consider.
All right. Thanks. No other comments? If no further comments, intended motion to adjourn. It's been moved improperly second.